Good evening, I'd like to call the regular Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting to order until March the 17th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everyone here, appreciate you coming. And at this time, I will ask Vice Chairman Donovan to lead us in a word of prayer.
Pray with me, please. Father, tonight, on a night that's cold and dreary and would cause us to think about all the things that are not right, we come to you thinking about things that you've made right. We thank you for the blessings that we enjoy, that of freedom in the country in which we live, that of not experiencing want in almost any way. And there are so many blessings that we almost forget on a daily basis, things that we enjoy, quality of life and so forth that we have. We pray that you would remind us of those things and that you would also teach us to be thankful for those. Father, we also should be thankful for those trials that we have, those things that teach us insights that lead to understanding and wisdom, trials that encourage us to be patient, that teach us endurance and give us insight. So, Father, I ask that you would use those things that come our way, that we might become better people and serve you in a better way than we normally do. Tonight, we can hardly stop to meet without thinking of all the things that are going on in our world, all around the world, thankful for our servants who stand up and contribute to and provide us freedom and who speak words of encouragement to those people who also want to be free as well. We ask for wisdom tonight, Lord, that in all things that we do, that we would always do what's best for the citizens of Stanley County. And, Father, I ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen. If you will, join with me, stand as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
Before we get into the approval, I'd like to mention that Commissioner McIntyre was coming tonight, but due to the inclement weather, he was a little bit afraid he might slip and we don't need him broke up again, so I s- we suggested he stay at home, we tried to do it one more meeting without him, so that's where he's at tonight, but he's doing well. Are there any adjustments or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Motion made by Commissioner, is that Rashido?
Yeah.
And seconded by Commissioner Morton. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. The first item on the, well, another thing we're gonna do, I'm gonna do the retirement thing and then I'm gonna switch and let y'all move the public comment up to where y'all will have to wait here all night on this and let you do your talking then. But the, let's do the retirement award, I believe it's for Ms. Ann Thompson, I believe Norah Shields is not here, is that right? Okay. Let's go down.
Ms. Thompson, would you like to come forward? Stand right here if you will. And Commissioner, the chairman has asked me if I would to present this tonight. We're honoring tonight Margaret Ann Thompson, Ann began working with the Stanley County Department of Social Services on January the 12th, 1999, as a program support assistant until retirement on January the 31st, 2014. Ann has spent the last 15 years as the frontline person with the Department of Social Services. She is a very caring, compassionate person and always tried to make sure clients received excellent service. Ann is married to Gary Thompson, together they have one daughter Natalie and a son-in-law, Philip Smith, with three grandchildren Nathan, Amos and Abby. In her retirement, Ann plans to spend more time to her fam- with her family as well as traveling and enjoying her time, socializing and relaxing. Ann is an extremely hard worker that has given herself tirelessly throughout her years at the Department of Social Services. She's very family oriented and never meets a stranger. Her coworkers love her dearly and wish her a long, happy, healthy and restful retirement. We have a token of our appreciation, a cloth, and it has an inscription on the inside cover that says, "Presented to Ann Thompson for faithful and dedicated service to the citizens of Stanley County, on this occasion of your retirement, we extend our sincere appreciation for your service and wish you even greater achievement and rewards in the future. Presented this 17th day of March, 2014, Stanley County Board of Commissioners." We certainly appreciate all that you've done, it sounds like you're dearly loved by your coworkers and I hope you enjoy spending time with those grandchildren.
I plan on doing that. Thank you.
Have a good time in retirement, now the alarm, I don't play work.
So, I don't need one.
You don't need to worry about it.
I'll wake up without it. Thank you so much.
At this time, we're gonna move the public comment up to this time and I'll ask, I believe we've got one signed up, Mr. Macy Henson, would you come forward at this time?
Yes, sir, I have a copy of what I'm gonna talk about, I'm allowed to pass them out.
Before I begin, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. My name is Macy Henson, I was born and raised in Baton, North Carolina. I lived on Lee Street, if some of you can go back that far. Lived there up until this time, I graduated from high school, I got married at the age of 19. But what I wanted to talk to you about tonight is things that has the West Baton community concerned, and I'll just read off what we have written down. To the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, "From the concerned citizens of West Baton community, we, the concerned citizens of the West Baton and surrounding communities, have a concern for Alcoa's cleanup of hazardous waste sites identified in and around the former aluminum producing plant. We are concerned that the sites identified did not adequately include the areas where we live. As residents of Baton, we were not included in the process of identifying the sites that were hazardous, where hazardous waste and illegal dumping took place. Realizing that we were overlooked in the process, we are seeking answers to questions that affect our community. As a result of our own awareness, we are knowledgeable of, there are no, there was no information shared or inquired on behalf of the West Baton community. We want to know why we were excluded. There is a trash dump which was covered with just dirt in our community where hazardous waste was dumped. Our question is, was it adequately treated? There are wooded areas in our community where hazardous materials were dumped to be out of sight. There are personal property areas in the West Baton community that were not tested or included in the process that occurred. There are risk hazards, there are risks of health issues and side effects of the materials. Why are they? There is a desire among the citizens to have the area independently tested and seek means of getting the areas cleaned up. In the interest of the West Baton community and surrounding area, will you assist us in this matter? Also, it was brought to the intention of Division of Water Management that there were concerns, and it was dated August 16th, 2013, and this letter came from the Southern Environmental Law Center, and it also stated that we urge Division of Waste Management to hold Alcoa fully accountable for waste from its closed aluminum facility in and around the West Baton community, but there was never any response from that letter that was sent to the Division of Waste Management. And we are here tonight seeking to know if there is anything that you can do to help us. We went to the Baton Town Council Meeting last Tuesday and gave them the same information that I gave to you tonight, and we feel like somebody, we feel like Alcoa needs to be held accountable for what they did. We have reason to believe that there was hazardous material dumped in the woods, in the West Baton community. And like I stated also, the trash dump, we don't feel it was adequately taken care of when they just covered it up with dirt. Now, I know you're not gonna sit there and say, okay, we're gonna do something tonight. I want you to think about it, get back with us and let us know if there is anything that you could do. We basically wanted to get it on record and follow protocol, which we feel was the correct protocol to follow in coming to this meeting after we went to the Baton Town Council and see if there's anything can be done.
I was at the Baton Town Council Meeting when they were talking about it, it was a good presentation, and I think they're doing the proper protocol, it's either the first thing is that Town Manager Jay Amen was gonna start contacting Alcoa about this, and one thing I've been thinking about since then that would be helpful, is like if you had a specific address for where you would have a concern about, you know, like more, or even a pinpointed location about the concern to see what property is on and stuff like that. You know, because there's, I know there's, I know you're saying, come out there and find it, but is there a specific place that you know of where you could actually pinpoint and tell somebody?
There is a specific-
And with that, with an address or something like that?
It doesn't have an address, but there is a specific place in the woods, in the West Baton community. Just to give you a little history of what Alcoa did, when they built the plant, they, there was Highway 740 that divided the white neighborhood from the black neighborhood. We had two of everything, we had two schools, different churches, we had two wastewater treatment plants. One of them was in the West Baton community in the woods and that plant has since been shut down. There are mounds of dirt out there that has grown over with grass, there's evidence that there are fire brick in the, in the woods in that area, and it's just standing there, left to be like it was when it was closed.
So, one of your specific locations is the wastewater, the old wastewater treatment plant?
There is no address, it is gated road, and I could go on there, but the sign says no trespassing, and I can pinpoint this with a GPS if you would like to have that.
Yeah, some coordinates would actually be good, too. I mean, that's what they're wondering, having specific locations where they can actually go look if you have a concern, rather than just going out and just randomly hoping to find a place, because y'all, you would know more of the locations than somebody just coming in and just, you know what I mean, just testing and going out and looking.
Yeah, if somebody wishes to contact me other than me sneaking on the land, my phone number is 704 704 985 5862. The name of our group is the Concerned Citizens of the West Baton Community, I'm the co-chairman and Eric Jackson is the other co-chairman. We have a list of names and phone numbers of the people of that group, and I can also bring those names back when I get you a correctly dated and signed letter.
Well, Macy, I'm old enough to know the area you're talking about, so, and I know where the gate's at, so just give us time to work on it. I know the Commissioners are technically settled with Alcoa, but, you know, we'll try to get something, Deener or somebody, really, Deener should be looking at it.
Yeah, I went to, well, we went to a meeting when they had it at the Country Club, I don't have the exact date. We also went to a meeting when they had the, at Mar mountain State Park, when they had the list of things that Alcoa had identified, and they were supposed to come up with a means of rectifying it. And I asked the question at the meeting at Mar Mountain State Park, where did this list come from? And the person from Deener said it came from people in the community and people who had worked at Alcoa. I asked him, did he talk to anybody in the West Baton community? And I got the deer in headlights look, so that's why we're here tonight.
I think I met-
Yeah, and also I met with Lindsay was in a meeting. As a matter of fact, when we had the meeting at the Country Club, we were talking, I was talking about the trash dump, and somebody stood up and said, yeah, we used to go over there and set a fire every week, and they made light of it, and people started laughing. It's not funny to our community.
Mr. Henson, do you have an email address as well as this phone number, is there a way to contact you that way?
We also have a list of other people in the community that have emails and addresses. We, we've since organized, we have a mission statement, and I was just, I made a copy of yours and it said, "Commissioner of Stanley County Board of Commissioners, to provide leadership and support and to advocate actions for an effective government that seeks to enhance the quality of life for present and future generations of the people of Stanley County." And we do have a health issue with what's going on in those woods and that trash dump.
Thank you for being here, and we will get to work with this and look forward to seeing you and calling you a little bit later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Macy.
Thanks, everybody, for coming down, I know some of y'all came out to Baton also, so appreciate your grassroots involvement.
If y'all would like to leave and not have to stay here, you're welcome to, I'll just recess a few minutes and let y'all, we won't disturb anybody, go right ahead and don't have to sit here listening to us the rest of the meeting. You gonna have the emails with you or you gonna bring them back?
Mr. Henson, was there anyone else who wanted to address us tonight?
Does anyone else want to address, I'm sorry, I didn't ask y'all. Presenter is Donna Davis, Director. Good evening, Donna.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present these items tonight. I have three, and one of them, we had a brief last minute change, and I think you received a update of the resolution, one of the resolutions, the two resolutions I'll be presenting tonight. But first of all, I'd like to state that Stanley County Utilities is seeking funding through the North Carolina Department of Environment Natural Resources Clean Water State Revolving Fund and high cost unit programs for the upgrade of sewer, sewer infrastructure along Airport Road. The Deener Clean Water State Revolving Fund would be for the Airport Road project, and the high unit cost project, program would be for the Palestine Pump Station Rehabilitation and Replacement Project. And attached, or you receive two resolutions that would authorize staff to submit an application and the associated information required for these funding programs. The first one, the resolution for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund is the one that needed to be updated, and I want to bring to your attention the changes that were, that were made by our engineer. If you look on the new copy you have versus the older copy you have that was submitted last week, you'll see that in paragraph two, it says, "Where Stanley County has need for and intends to construct a wastewater collection system project described as the Phase One Airport Corridor Project to install." The new one says 12,100 linear feet. The older ones stated 11,700 linear feet, so that's an increase of 400 linear feet in this project. Of six inch force main from Pump Station One, parallel to an existing four inch force main from Pump Station One, install four in the old one for air release valves, and the new one, eight air release valves. Install two 50 horsepower submersible pumps, repair five damaged manholes and repair plus or minus 200 linear feet of four inch PVC service laterals. Those are the changes, it would be from four to eight air release valves, and from 11,000, 11,700 linear feet to 12,100 linear feet. So, those would be the changes in the resolutions that the engineer recommended for, for our The second resolution is similar, but it asks for permission to submit an application to rehabilitate the Palestine Pumping Station, this is a water pump station, to enclose three vertical turbine pumps, each with a capacity of 600 gallons per minute to yield a firm pumping capacity of 1200, 1200 gallons per minute. And if you're familiar with the Palestine Pump Station, most people are not, because it's underground, and they don't see it, they drive past it, but they don't see it, it's a very old pump station. We have some concerns about safety, we have some concerns about the ability of it to run consistently, it's been working fine, but it's getting older, and it's one that definitely needs some attention and needs to be replaced, and that is why we're seeking funding through this program. And the final item, I don't know how you want to consider this, consider these, but the final item is related to the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant, so I don't know whether you want to break these up now and ask about the resolutions, or whether you want me to continue with the wastewater treatment plant funding.
Y'all want to take care of the first, first item first and get it out the way? Let's, anybody got any questions here on the first items, the applications? Anyone have any questions? Much pleasure to board. Motion made by Commissioner Rashido for approval of the CWSRF, do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item.
I make a motion, we approve the application for resolution for HUC application for the Palestine Pump Station Rehab Replacement Project.
Motion made by Commissioner Rashido for approval of the HUC application for the Palestine Pump Station, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried.
And I would like to reiterate, as always, that these grant applications do not constitute any obligation on behalf of the county until we receive an award and we decide to accept or reject that award based on whatever it is. So, while we will be applying, we have not received anything and we're not obligated to expend any funds related to these projects at this time. The final item is related to the purchase of the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant and associated infrastructure from, from the town of Oakboro. Stanley County Utilities is requesting approval to establish a fund for accounting purposes and to designate categories for expenditures and sources of revenues related to this facility and its associated infrastructure. Basically, what we're asking is to set up a fund for this particular wastewater treatment plant, which will record all the expenditures and all the revenues associated with that particular treatment plant as a separate fund within Stanley County in addition to the basic 641 utilities fund. You have attached budget amendments 2014, 27 through 30, and these have been generated by the Finance Department to establish that fund and to put the funding in place to be able to facilitate the purchase and then the operation of that wastewater treatment plant in the name of Stanley County.
Anyone have any questions, Donna?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, but I think it's important and to maybe respond to some questions in the community. This does state that the treatment rate at West Stanley will remain the same, 4.30 per thousand gallons for both FY 13, 14, and I believe if I'm reading it correctly, also FY 14, 15. And I think that's something that certainly has been asked out in the community, and I just wanted to point that out, that's what, this is the information that's being provided to us tonight.
Yeah, as part of the purchase agreement, we'll be assuming some contracts that are, were in place with Locust and the city of, the city of Locust and the town of Stanfield for treatment for 14, 15, and I believe 15, 16, I think there's, is that correct, Jenny? Is it 15, 16? I think it's the next two fiscal years, and after that, those contracts would expire and we would either have to renew them or get into a similar situation that we have our existing in relationship with Almarl, so, but yes, those are, and obviously you all take, will take action on the bu, the 14, 15 budget in June, but we have tentatively included a budget in here that we think will be able to keep the rates at $4.30 into next year, which should help the towns with their planning for their budget.
Anyone else have any questions? Do we need two motions on this, one for each one, for the water, the sewer rate and for the water line?
No.
We do it all in one?
No, sir, you can just do it all as one budget amendment, it's all been incorporated into those budget amendments.
Much pleasure to board.
I make a motion to consider and approve the savings of the West Stanley Sewer Fund 631 with the budget amendments, and also approve the budget amendments associated with the purchase of a sewer treatment plant and St. Martin Road water line.
Motion made by Commissioner Morton for approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rashido. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next item on the agenda is the new school resource officer position and budget amendment. Presenter is Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The county has actually recognized, I think this is the third one of these grants from the state for school resource officers at the middle schools this year. The county included some funding in its operational budget for one of these at the Almarl, where it's part of the budget process, and then there were three grants that have been received. Because the grant, the grants have been received sort of in staggered terms, we have, we have sufficient funding as a result of lapsed salaries, so we're not recognizing any additional funding for salaries at this time, but we're, there is a budget amendment so that we can get a vehicle purchased, because we've, we've used all of our used cars up for these positions, and so we do need a new vehicle. And so, with that, you've got a budget amendment in front of you, this will, this will finalize school resource officers at all of our middle schools. So, I think that's certainly a step in the right direction for security and safety at those schools. From a fiscal impact, just note that these funds are available for this year and then for 14, 15, but moving forward in 15, 16 and beyond, there's no, there's no guarantee that these state grants are gonna be there, and so just understand that, you know, once these positions now are in place, there may be an expectation of continued funding, and that may fall to the county and the, and the local school board in fiscal year 15, 16 and beyond.
Much pleasure to board.
I make a motion, we approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo for approval. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the appointment to the Stanfield Planning and Zoning Board Adjustment for ETJ. Presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stan, town of Stanfields, ETJ is seeking a, a, a member for, to serve the, the county unincorporated areas of that town on its ETJ, and so Nick Haycock has been recommended by the Stanfield Town Council, and that item is before you for consideration this evening.
Much pleasure to board.
I make a motion to, can Nick Haycock be appointed to serve a two-year term on the Stanfield Planning and Zoning Board Adjustments?
Motion made by Commissioner Morton for approval of Nick Haycock to be appointed for a two-year term. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. The next item is the consent agenda, we've had it before, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Vice Chairman Donovan for approval. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. We've already had public comment, Leon, you missed that. I mean, you know, early bird gets the worm, I'm sorry. Let's start with general comments. Mr. Commissioner Morton, I'll start with you tonight.
No comments tonight, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ashudo.
Hey, just real quick, I want to say, I'm pretty excited that, you know, I've been doing those monthly workdays, and on Saturday night at six o'clock, I'm gonna work with the EMS crew till seven AM over at the Albemarle Station, so I'm pretty excited about that. Hopefully, we don't have to go on any calls, but you know, that'd be a pretty good process, I think.
Vice Chairman Donovan.
I was just gonna say, thank you to those individuals who participated with the Connect Our Future Public Forum that was held last Wednesday at the Aggreg Civic Center, and I want to just remind folks that they can still log in their priorities for regional growth and the things, and see the things that, the impacts that those priorities will make on a Connect Our Future MetroQuest dot com, dot com website, and I believe that's connect to, is tied to our, our Stanley County website, right? And I also just wanted to say, thank you, even though Gene's not here, to Commissioner McIntyre for helping to have a day for high school students that could come here and learn things related to citizenship, and I know we had some staff and a couple of Commissioners that are here as well that taught with them about things that the young people needed to know about what's going on in county government, and I hope they went away with a better appreciation of that, both from a financial planning point of view, and also several department heads, and Andy might can fill in what I don't tell you, but did an excellent job that day, and the students seemed to well, to well receive it.
I have no comment. Mr. Andy?
The only comment I have is the school board is interested in, in meeting with you all, to have a, to have a joint meeting, and so I had an opportunity to talk with Superintendent Griffin this afternoon, or actually, it was mid-morning, and they've given four dates, and I'm gonna list these in their, their preference order for your consideration. April fifteenth, April eighth, those are both Tuesdays. April fourteenth, which is a Monday, and April tenth, which is a Thursday. And so they're interested in fifteenth, eighth, fourteenth, and tenth, that was their order of preference.
This evening meeting, probably?
Yeah, I was assuming we would host them, and I believe last time, and it's been three years ago at least, maybe four, time flies, we, they hosted and, and held the, held the dinner, so I figured we would return the favor and, and host them, so we'll, we'll find a, find a location, and it may be right here in the partnership room, and, and host a, a joint meeting, so it'd be, we'd be evening dinner meeting.
Well, that means that taxes will already be in the mail by then, so everyone will be good to go. Ready talks, I'm, I'm fine with the fifteenth.
What date suits y'all, the fifteenth? Ms. Attorney, I want to get you.
No comment, thank you, sir.
I will entertain a motion at this time to recess this meeting and to go into closed session.
Make a motion, a second.
Motion made by Commissioner Morton to go into closed session, seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. I'll get your, I had to, give me a think, I'm just, my card is rolling, and I will tell you, we're going in to discuss economic development in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, little a parentheses, four parentheses. All in favor, say aye. We're in closed session.